It's all your leaders in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
God of heaven, we thank you for the gathering of the minds of this great city. We pray right now that you be with them in their decision-making. Father, endow them with wisdom to better lead your people into the way which this city is built on. We pray right now, God, for you said any word, and the multitude of council there is safety. Father, touch the leaders of our city. Bless our mayor, Father, in all that he's been trying to endeavor to do. Bless his cabinet and council members, Father, together. And with ever give your name the glory on and praise in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have an opportunity this morning to honor a couple of people who are here to draw attention to White cane day. And we also have a unique visitor this morning. Camelot has come in. So I'll ask, I'll ask both of you to come up. Camelot, come on up forward. He was hoping, he was hoping to get a little rest there, but we've got him back in attention. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it. I think it'll explain most of what we need to know.
Whereas the white cane is used by hundreds of Oklahoma City residents who are legally blind in order to navigate our city and access its public places, schools, and businesses. Whereas with proper training, people using the white cane can enjoy greater mobility and safety by determining the location of curbs, steps, uneven pavement, and other physical obstacles in their path. Whereas the white cane has opened the doors of opportunity to thousands of blind Oklahomans by enabling them to travel freely and independently in their communities. Whereas the white cane is now universally recognized as a symbol of blindness and improves the safety of blind pedestrians by alerting drivers when a visually impaired person is crossing a street, parking area, or other areas open to the public. Whereas Oklahoma law requires drivers to come to a full stop at least 15 feet away from a visually impaired pedestrian, using a white cane or dog guide, and take such precautions before proceeding as may be necessary to avoid an accident or injury to the person who is wholly or partially blind. Whereas to honor the many achievements of blind and visually impaired citizens and to recognize the white cane's significance in advancing independence, the United States Congress by joint resolution approved October 6, 1964, has designated October 15 of each year as White Cane Safety Day. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim October 15 as White Cane Safety Day in Oklahoma City. And he calls upon all citizens to observe this day by recognizing the significance of the white cane, both as a symbol of independence and as a simple tool that enables Oklahoma City residents with visual disabilities to participate more fully in the social and economic life of our community.
Let's show our appreciation to White cane day. Who do we have here?
Sandy Webster.
Sandy, why is it so important?
Because it helps people understand, we're just people, we're trying to get around, we just do it a little differently. Vicki uses a cane, I use a dog. And safety's important because we can't see what's coming towards us. So just, you know, education and awareness.
And Vicki?
We are hosting a program and a public awareness walk on October the 15th at the Outlet Mall of Oklahoma City. Program starts at 1:30 and the walk starts at 2 o'clock. And my councilman, Mr. Shadid, is not here today, I don't believe, but I've issued a personal invitation for him to come out and walk with us. And I hope that all of you will feel free to come walk with us and participate in this wonderful event and become educated as to what blind and visually impaired people are capable of.
Thank you very much. Once again, let's show our appreciation. Thank you all so much.
We'd like to invite you and the council to join us on the 15th.
Yeah, give us the details again, the 15th at the Outlet Mall?
Outlet Mall of Oklahoma City.
And what time?
15th. We're going to have lunch at 12:30, a program at 1:30, and our walk at 2:00.
Okay.
Any part of it.
I hope you get a big crowd out there. Thank you. We also have an opportunity this morning to honor our teacher of the month, Paul Bianchi. Paul, why don't you come up? Bring your family and bring, well, bring everybody up. We'll have a big crowd up here. The Oklahoma City Rotary Club helps us honor one teacher per month. I mean, we have 24 school districts, thousands of teachers, and so to be selected as the teacher of the month is quite an honor, Paul. Congratulations. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Paul Bianchi has been named teacher of the month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club 29 for October 2012. Whereas Paul Bianchi teaches junior ROTC at John Marshall High School and has served Oklahoma City Public Schools students for four years. Whereas Paul Bianchi has been honored as John Marshall High School's 2012 Building Teacher of the Year and was a finalist in the 2012-2013 Oklahoma City Public Schools District Teacher of the Year competition. Whereas Paul Bianchi had a distinguished career in the United States Air Force before he entered teaching and seeks to use that experience to teach students the values of discipline and commitment. Whereas Paul Bianchi is a tireless advocate, positive role model, and consummate cheerleader for his students. Whereas Paul seeks to involve parents in their child's education through regular outreach. Whereas Paul Bianchi is a leader in the school and in the community stressing service before self. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Paul Bianchi on his selection as October 2012 Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club 29 of Oklahoma City.
And Paul, there's a little bit of suspense here because we have to have a vote on this. So if we can get a motion and a second, see if we can get some lights. How about that? It's unanimous. Now let's show our appreciation for the teacher.
I didn't need to say anything. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate it so much. And thank you, City Council of Oklahoma City and Ward 8 Councilman Patrick Ryan. We, I appreciate so much the investment that the city of Oklahoma City has made in Oklahoma City Public Schools, the Rotary Club 29 of Downtown Rotary Club, and the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools. It's just so wonderful to have a community that, that stands for our students and sees the future in our kids and how important it is to invest in them and invest in their future. And the program that I teach junior ROTC is such a blessing to see kids receive in ways that they may never have had invested in them in that, up to that point in their lives. And having the opportunity just to invest in them and spend time with them is such a blessing and a great investment. So thank you so much. And Robyn, thank you for your investment in the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation to all the teachers and students that you serve. And again, service before self, I see you all doing that right now. And that is just such a critical part of being an American is serving others before ourselves. So thank you so much.
Not going to let you get off quite that easily. Paul has 85 students at John Marshall that are under his guidelines. How have you been able to grow that program so successfully?
Well, what I do is, I won't take it because I'll be here for 30 minutes. I see you doing it, Mr. Mayor, but I have a tendency to. But it's basically by establishing, establishing a standard and risking the kids leaving my program because the standard is too high for them to achieve. But once I established the standard, I realized that they were, they want a standard, they want something to achieve. And so I set the standard and the first couple of years was very, very rough on me because I was, it was not, I was used to being in the military and saying, "Do it." And they went and did it. I got into a high school classroom setting and I said, "Did it." And I heard 30 different responses. And so it's been quite a, God's grace has pulled me through and it's been quite a, an ordeal, but so wonderful. But setting the standard and they'll rise to it. And kids recruit one another. The students who are energized, they'll recruit their friends. And so just building, getting them involved in the community, community service, fun activities, color guards, all the different things that make up a strong junior ROTC program, and the kids are drawn to it. So it's, it's maintaining that just with the energy and with the kids' energy and their commitments. So it's a wonderful thing.
Well, good luck and congratulations. Let's show our appreciation.
Mayor, I got to tell you, being an Air Force veteran, I always enjoy seeing people in blues. So thank you for your service to the country and now your service to the kids here in the community. Appreciate it.
I'll ask Councilman McAtee to come down. As is customary, every six months, we have a new vice mayor. And for the last six months, Councilman McAtee has been serving in that role, filling in and, and opportunities for the mayor's office gets a little bit overwhelmed. And I have a gift to show my appreciation for your service. I didn't hear any bad reports, so you must have gotten through it okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's nice to turn the vice mayor over to Gary Mars, who will do a great job. Thank you, sir.
But not going to let you off at it because I understand you've written a book and it's out now. I want to give you a chance to promote your book now that you're an author.
Well, yes, we've been blessed, my wife and I, to publish a book. And we have our first book signing this coming Saturday afternoon after the OU Texas game at the Beatnik Cafe in Ward 6. And welcome everybody down there. Our country is going through a tremendous economic upheaval right now, and the title of the book is Rebuilding Your Financial Wall God's Way. It's a way, a plan that with God's help, people can get out from under being upside down in their house, underwater, on their car, encumbered by heavy student loans. So we're looking forward to having a great time with it.
The Beatnik, the Beatnik Cafe, 6 o'clock Saturday this week.
Three to five.
Three to, 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock this Saturday. That's right. It's early kickoff and it gives you set after the game. All right. Thanks, Larry. Let's show our appreciation for Councilman McAtee. Call the meeting to order. We're on item three of the council agenda. I'll look for a motion on item 3B through 3E. This is a series of appointments. All right, comments or questions here? Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 2nd. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for September 25th. All right, cast your votes. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Yes, Mayor, I have several. Let me direct you to page 10 of the agenda under unsecured properties. Item 8C1. D is in David, 331 Southwest 28th Street. We're requesting that that item be stricken for rework for additional violations. Item F is in Frank, 2209 Southwest 33rd Street. Also strike this item, owner has secured. And item I is in Ida, 1927 Northwest 41st Streets. Strike that item, owner has secured. That's all, Mayor.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances?
Mayor, I was, I thought we were going to continue item 6F.
Six, is that S?
F is in Frank.
F is in Frank. I thought we were, we were going to defer it.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Okay. Everyone okay with that, deferring that to a future time? All right, item 6F is...
Just deferring it indefinitely?
Deferring it indefinitely, yes. Item 6F is deferred. All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority as we recess the council meeting. We have two items here, make it three. Comments or questions on the MFA?
Just one minor. In this renewed agreement, we, I guess negotiated to provide free unlimited tanning. And I would just, a word of caution that in future negotiations, tanning and to make it free for our employees unlimited is increasingly controversial and not necessarily consistent with healthy living. I just want, it's a minor point, but it, increasingly controversial.
You're just making a comment. All right. Any other comments or questions on MFA? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have four items. All right, comments or questions here on the PPA? Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA, convene with, as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items. Comments here? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent token. All right, are there any individual considerations this morning? Yeah, Larry?
U is in uniform.
All right, Larry, you want to get started with you?
Yes, U, your honor, is a resolution authorizing the continuation and release for vehicle storage for the police department's nuisance abatement program. It's been several years ago that the department went to both Fort Worth, Texas, and Denver, Colorado to view two cities that were impounding vehicles from citizens who were causing a nuisance. And I'd just like if Chief City would come forward and just give us a brief recap of how that's going at this juncture.
Well, as you're aware, last year, the council added those individuals that solicit for prostitution also to, as part of that group. So now we have the solicitation for purposes of prostitution. Also, we have drive-by, people that are involved in a drive-by and then also in pursuits. And we're probably averaging around 20, 25 vehicles a month that we are actually impounding and holding for that 90-day period. Obviously, if there's an owner, if they're not the owners, then we release those vehicles back, back to the rightful owner. But we feel like it's been very successful in those areas. We've had an increase, an uptick in prostitution activity. So we've had, most of our cars lately, as of late, have really been coming from those individuals that are soliciting street prostitution. So we feel like it's been beneficial. One of the things about the nuisance abatement program that's even, I think even more beneficial is in the beginning, we actually, you know, actually held some businesses responsible for having prostitutes on their property, declare them a nuisance, and getting them to shut those operations down. So I think the thread of that, in many cases, we've used to actually get people to voluntarily comply with any nuisance that's going on on their property. So I believe it's been successful.
Chief, under the program as it relates to the, the empowerment of the vehicles, are the individuals given a right to, an opportunity to retrieve the vehicles? Or are they placed, the vehicles ultimately placed in a forfeiture status?
Well, it's not an actual asset forfeiture. It's merely to abate the problem, at least for 90 days, the vehicles. They do not, we do not seize the vehicles indefinitely. They, they're actually, we hold them for 90 days. That actually keeps them from using that vehicle for either other drive-bys, solicitation and prostitution. It's part of, it's part of that penalty stage. So there's not actually a seizure. Now, for instance, if an individual is using the car, and it's a family car, say it's solicitation of prostitution, and you have family members that also are owners of that vehicle and need that vehicle, then we release that vehicle the next day. They can come down and really, and get that vehicle. So it's not actually considered a seizure as you would permanently take that car away from somebody.
But we hold the car for 90 days. And I'm not talking about the drive-by shooting. The issues come to me on several occasions in reference to the prostitution issue of individuals' vehicles that, so the notice that, that the individual received, if they are charged with soliciting, their notice clearly states that your car will not be released for 90 days. And hell, where is due?
That's, that's actually what you're approving today, is the facility that allows, a facility we pay lease on to hold that vehicle.
And that's the notice that they receive? Maybe I should be talking to legal about this. I'm trying to figure out, how do we justify telling someone that your car is going to be kept by the city of Oklahoma City for 90 days?
Because the city council's adopting an ordinance declaring it a public nuisance if you use it for certain offenses. And we do provide for, if there's, say, there are multiple owners of the car, say it's owned by a husband and wife, and the violator is one or the other, then the innocent owner can come in and immediately get the car. I believe that's correct.
In those situations where you have a vehicle that is under a financial agreement, which, you know, it's still being financed either by the bank or by a, some finance company, what type of notice goes to them? Do they get notice that the car is being held in, in an empowerment with the city?
We're not affecting the title to the vehicle at all. We're just depriving the violator of the use of the vehicle for 90 days. And at the end of 90 days, they can come back in and get the car. They, they still own it. They're just being deprived of the use of it.
And, and they have to pay then, what, the storage on the vehicle for each day?
Correct.
What if they're found innocent in court? Then what happens?
Ed, I'll let you answer that.
Edward Hasbrook with the city attorney's office. They're found innocent, the fees will be waived. There's actually an administrative hearing with administrative hearing officer and due processes provided to all people with possessory interest in the vehicle.
Well, I guess what my point is, how would you know if someone was, was charged on any given day or any given night? How would you know who all has possessory interest in that vehicle to give them notice?
Same way we would release an impounded vehicle. We check the ownership records, the department, or the Oklahoma Tax Commission.
So you have to go to the title?
We do check, we check the license, yeah, the licensed owner, that's correct.
And the title would show if there's a lien in reference to the financing of the vehicle? Would you then in fact notify the lien holder that we have the vehicle?
I'm not aware that we actually notify the lien holder because we're not affecting the ownership or the title. We're just, we're holding the vehicle as a nuisance. That's our abatement process for 90 days. And so it's merely a possessory interest, not the title, ownership interest at issue.
And how much is the empowerment per day?
I don't know offhand. I'd have to check.
So it'd be, it's conceivable that some of these individuals whose vehicles, if held for 90 days, depending upon what the empowerment status is as far as the cost, that when they come to pick up the car, the empowerment could be in excess of what the value of the car is, right?
It's a possibility, yes. But it wouldn't happen on any empowerment of any vehicle for any reason.
And then what happens to the car?
Several things can happen to the car. One is, under state law, impound, empowerment service can actually file Title 42 to have their lien for the possessory interest converted to them. In this case, since we're holding it, we, we don't, we're not converting the vehicle to us. So they either get it or we, we, I believe we send it to a wrecker service.
Have we had any administrative hearings where individuals have come in to have a hearing on the issue of their vehicle?
Absolutely, yes.
Well, I mean, have any of them succeeded in reference to the administrative hearing?
Yes, actually, there have been several that, that for whatever reason, the vehicle was deemed not to be a nuisance based on the facts presented to the hearing officer, and it was released and the fees were waived.
So who's the hearing officer?
It's usually the major of operations.
The major of operations?
Yes.
With the police department?
Yes.
Just interesting, thank you.
Just to clarify, we do send letters to the lien holders and registered owners both after the empowerment.
Thank you, chief. It just seemed like that, how could you not notify the title holder of the vehicle? What if it was a rental car?
Then the rental company would be shown as the owner and we'd send them notice, I would assume.
So you would give notice to the rental car owner?
And they would be an innocent owner so they could come in immediately and get the vehicle?
We have a provision to allow innocent owners to get the vehicle back.
After 90 days?
Well, they can get it back before that by signing an affidavit that they won't let the violator use the vehicle.
By signing an affidavit, send what?
They won't allow the violator to use the vehicle, I believe, for a year.
We actually, there's, there's a lot of them will release the next day. If a family member wants to come down and claim the car, then we release them and waive the fees on the vehicle.
So if a grandmother has a vehicle in her name and she allows her grandson to use the vehicle, or her granddaughter, and they get accused of this incident in reference to solicitation, and they are arrested and the car is impounded, the grandmother's notified because her name is on the title, and the grandmother comes down to pick up the car, she has to sign an affidavit with us saying that she will not allow that vehicle to be driven by the grandson or the granddaughter for a year?
Well, assuming grandma's not involved in the transaction or the crime.
Well, come on, grandmothers don't go out and solicit. Well, well, I...
I can't say that. With all due respect, I've read enough police reports, I can't say.
Okay.
But she could sign an affidavit and get the car back, just like someone could claim to be the innocent owner and get the car back.
But what I, I just wanted to make sure, what I thought I heard, is that the grandmother would have to sign an affidavit stating that she will not allow this granddaughter or grandson to drive that vehicle for a year?
Yes, that's my understanding.
And that's what we passed?
I believe that was in the ordinance.
Okay.
From a historical perspective, Councilman Kelly, this was passed for the intent of trying to bring under control the drive-by shootings and the fleeing of police officers. That was the original two nuisances that were in the ordinance. That was done, what, about six or seven years ago, chief? Uh, that was done, what, about six or seven years ago, chief? And then with this, with the activity on prostitution and the incur, and the outcry from some of the areas of town to try to bring this under control, uh, it was very, it's been very, very successful. For example, in Denver, exactly the process you're talking about, because what it's intended to do is to get the message out, and so before a gentleman, for example, goes and solicits a prostitute, what he's risking is having to go home and say, "Honey, I lost the car." Because the car is impounded immediately upon the, uh, on the incident, is it not, chief? And it can be a very effective deterrent if, uh, if we aggressively want to use it to try to bring this prostitution situation under control, especially in some areas of town. So, that was the background on it.
I understand, you know, and I, I have been a, a total supporter of the issue of violent crime in reference to some of the forfeiture issues that, that's been used and, and have been, uh, involved in that process for over twenty-five, thirty years. It, it just seems like that sometimes, you know, some of this don't really address the issue at hand. And, uh, if an individual took a taxicab to engage in an act of solicitation, I think you're addressing what was the mode of transportation that gets the individual to the place where he or she wants to be in order to do what they intend to do. But you wouldn't, if the individual was engaged in some solicitation, and he took a taxicab there, and he was arrested, and they say, "Well, how did you get here?" "Well, I had X, Y, Z taxicab bring me." Would you go and seize the taxicab?
Well, I think, I think a lot of those scenarios.
If, if that's the issue, is the issue to, to address? Because otherwise, I think we're assuming that all acts of solicitation is done inside a vehicle.
Well, no. I'm just. No, I mean, obviously, it's not. But if the vehicle is used to help facilitate that solicitation, if a vehicle was used to help facilitate that, then yes, we would, that car would be impa, it would be impounded. It's, it's kind of a tool in the, in committing the crime itself. So, that's, that's kind of what, the reason behind it. It's kind of like in pursuits. You know, the grandmother scenario for prostitution isn't, isn't really very realistic, but it probably is more realistic in if we're involved in a pursuit or a drive-by where, say, a, a family member has loaned their son a car, or something, they've gone out and committed a crime, or they've been involved in a pursuit. But that vehicle's always released back to the family member pretty quickly. We don't even have to provide notice in most cases. They'll, they'll call us, they'll be down there the next day before they even receive notice, because they know their, their, their relative is in jail, that they've been arrested, their car's been impounded, they want to know how to get it out. So, in most cases, we don't even need to make notification.
Chief, can I just, I think there are some, especially with looking into the sex offender issue, I think there are some laws that maybe are just feel-good laws that really don't have, like, sex offenders can't live within X feet of the park. I mean, does that really decrease, uh, I mean, somebody can walk that much farther? I mean, it doesn't, so I'm wondering, Larry's saying that there's some empirical data in Denver? I mean, do we, do we have studies that show that this actually decreases this behavior? Because I think what Skip is alluding to is that if somebody wants to solicit, they can solicit. They'll find, they can go rent a car, they can borrow a car. This isn't going to stop someone from soliciting.
There's, there's really not any one thing we can put, you know, in an ordinance that's going to keep people from doing any crime. It's, it's maybe a series of things that we do. If I had my preference, there'd be a state law that allows us to seize a vehicle for soliciting. That would be a real deterrent. Losing a car for ninety days, in most cases, is going to be a deterrent. Losing your car permanently would probably really, really reduce prostit, you know, prostitution or street prostitution, you know, in this community. So, I mean, that, that would be my, that's what I'd rather see, but it's, you know, in the past years, that's been presented and, and has not really, you know, been proceeded through, you know, the state as far as a law. Uh, but it has been quite a while since that's been done. Personally, I'd like to see that done, because I think that would truly have an impact, more so than just having their car for ninety days.
But is, are there studies, or is there empirical data from other study, cities that says that does work?
You know, Den, I think Colorado has the strictest laws, the ones we originally looked at, because they actually have a state law that, that allows you to do the things that, that, say, Denver is doing. And, you know, I can certainly find out what, what they're seeing, if they're seeing a reduction. It's just hard, it's hard to say you have a reduction, because right now, I'm going to tell you that probably prostitution, at least street prostitution, is up. It's not down since we, since we implemented this. But would it be higher if we hadn't implemented? I, it's just, you know, statistics are very difficult, because, you know, our population's growing, there's, we have more, we're, we're seeing more of an influx in, in prostitution, both on the street and, say, massage parlors, those types of things that we're having to follow up on. Human trafficking, uh, is on, is on the increase, and a lot of that, a lot of that prostitution is, you know, kind of a basis for some of that. So, we can look at, we can look at the statistics, but I can tell you right now that prostitution's up, that if, if we're looking for this, you know, to say that it's not helping, my, my question would be, well, how bad would it be if we hadn't? So, you know, in, in some cases, what we probably need to do is publicize the fact that we're doing it more, so that, so that individuals realize that they're not going to have their car for ninety days if they go down and they get caught. Uh, but we can, you know, we can, we can, we can provide some of those types of things.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. And item eight A is an ordinance being introduced today, and I believe we're having someone from the water utilities department to come in and, and give us an explanation. Here she is. Good morning, Marcia.
Good morning. My apologies for being late. I, item eight A introduces a proposed, a simple proposed ordinance amendment. By way of background, we require permits for certain activities to each of the lake reservations, fishing, boating, off-road vehicle riding, and hunting. A number of, a number of vendors sell those permits for us. Earlier, we changed the off-road vehicle permit annual fee to seventy-five dollars. This ordinance amendment changes the fee that a vendor who sells the permits for us pays to us for that permit from fifty-five dollars to seventy dollars. It, this process, this matches our previous action and addresses, pardon me, I ran. This, so this addresses the general schedules of fee portion of your, of your municipal code that describes how those reselling permit vendors are compensated, changes one line from fifty-five dollars to seventy dollars. We would, we would ask that you set this for public hearing on the sixteenth and consider it on the twenty-third of October.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, this program, this overall program, um, that deals with, um, off-road, uh, vehicles, has been a tremendous success. I mean, it is a, it, it's a program that has really changed the way that, uh, West Elm Creek and the, and the Draper area is utilized by, uh, really putting the, the dirt bike guys and the off-road vehicle people kind of in charge of policing it themselves, restricting them to a certain area. It, it has been a, it is a, uh, is a very, very successful program in terms of, of the way it's operated. I mean, all the way from the environmental side, where it's curtailing erosion and having people where they're not supposed to be, to, um, just cleanliness, order, it, it's a, it's been a, it's a huge success. And Marcia and Craig, uh, and the people on the staff of the Water Trust are very, uh, I, I personally appreciate very much all the energy that's gone into this kind of a program, because it has changed that whole area.
And we'll be holding a public hearing on this, I guess, next week? People are invited to come down and give their, give their thoughts. Thank you, Marcia.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll motion in a second to move this forward. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight B is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. We have a list of seven items on the list. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any of these items? All right, how about a motion, then? Cast your votes, and those items are deemed dilapidated. On to item eight C. This is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight C? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes on eight C, and it passed unanimously. Item eight D, I understand we do not need executive session? Do not. All right.
Do the items.
Okay. Uh, need a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight E, I understand we do not need executive session?
Do the items.
And a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. We have two items on the list. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under nine A?
Do the items.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item ten is items from council, and we'll start with Pete, who has a, a resolution dealing with our municipal court system.
Uh, the resolution, uh, speaks for itself. I, I sent out an email to everybody trying to, if, see if there were any additional comments, because it is a change to a certain extent in the way we've done things. Basically, it pays Judge Morgan retroactively to the first of July. Actually, she had served an additional month beyond that because of fiscal year requirements. We can't go back into the last fiscal year, and we've, I've discussed that with her, and she's pleased, uh, or satisfied with it. Um, so it's, and, uh, I want to thank her for her service as the, she was the vice presiding judge. Um, and then it will give each of the other judges, in order of their seniority, a twelve-week opportunity to serve as the presiding judge. Um, uh, we've, we've typically, uh, we've selected one, but we, since we have a brand-new judge, it seemed to me fair to rotate the thing, so everybody'd have a little bit of experience at it. All four of the sitting judges have indicated, uh, a desire to be the presiding judge, and so it gives each one of them a twelve-week shot at it. Because of the system, I put, I put this in the email, it's not in the resolution, because the system requires that the presiding judge evaluate all three of the other judges, I will personally, unless someone has an objection, that evaluate all the judges. Um, I mean, it's just a personnel policy that we evaluate them manually, uh, because I think it would be, put people in an unfair situation to be asked to evaluate people they're competing with it, for, with a job, for a job. Um, uh, the presiding judge also has visited the courtrooms of other, of the other judges. I pro, I plan to do that personally, and would welcome any other members of the council to do that on a drop-in basis. Uh, Judge Mangr did that and reported back to me when he was the, when he was presiding judge as the, and my, me as the chairman of the judiciary committee. Uh, so I plan to do that, and we'll be glad to let anybody know of my situations. I also, historically, the presiding judge has handled complaints against the other three judges, um, and, uh, I have handled the complaints that would come against the presiding judge. Again, I think it's awkward to ask them to handle complaints against one another at a time when they're competing for a job, and so I propose to handle those complaints. They're very rare. Frankly, many, the vast majority of them are people dissatisfied with the result, as opposed to dissatisfied with the judge, what, what they did. Many of those are weeded out ahead of time, because Stacy does a good job when people come to him with a complaint. He, he really works hard to try to determine which ones are, um, complaints based on dissatisfaction with the result, and tries to dissuade people from doing that, from filing a complaint in those cases. Uh, if he's unsuccessful, well, then they come see, they come, they're written as a form of complaint. I, I'll probably handle, unless the council has any other idea for a way to do it. Um, again, I've always handled them against the presiding judge, and it's, and there are so few of them, it's not like a huge additional workload for me to do it on the sitting judges. There's been one, frankly, since May, so it's not like, there's lots of them, so.
Okay.
So, Councilman, uh, White, is it my understanding that if, or in the past, if one had a complaint against any of the, the municipal judges, that complaint would be directed directly to the presiding judge?
Uh, if it's one of the other, one of the other three judges, the presiding judge handled it. If it was against the presiding judge, it was brought to me. In, in the whole time I've been, um, uh, uh, chair of the judiciary committee, there's been one brought to me, uh, over that, what, several, almost eight years now. So, um, it's not like a huge workload, there're not a lot of people make complaints, and basically, I will tell you that the ones that, that Judge Mangr handled against, that would be lodged against any one of the other three judges, and the one that I've handled were ninety-five percent dissatisfaction with the verdict, as opposed to being, occasionally, there's a comment in there about conduct, and some of those have, need to be addressed, and if, at least the person that has the allegation is made, needs to be aware that someone was concerned about their conduct, and, but it's all been done. Well, I suspect none of you have ever heard of one, so, uh, just, I've, it has been kind of part of the job of being the chairman of the judiciary committee to handle those, and I've handled them, um, quietly in the past, so that, because I, like I say, most of them, none of them have been found to have merit, so there's no point in making a big deal out of things that are just, like I say, I'm repeating myself for the, um, thing each time, but I, I can't overemphasize the fact that these complaints are virtually always about the verdict and not about the quality of the judge or whatever. The other thing I want to do is before, I'd like to select a new presiding judge. I, we would like to select, I think we should select a new presiding judge before the beginning of the next fiscal year, and I would, I would personally think we ought, we need to, in the meantime, evaluate their salaries. I think we've not kept up with the salaries of judges around the country. And also, I think the, the vice presiding judge probably needs to be paid some amount of money, because they do fill in when the judge is not there. And I think, uh, maybe, right now, there's about ten thousand dollars difference between the presiding judge and the s, exist, sitting judges. I think that the, um, if, if that, if that gap continued, I would think the vice presiding judge probably ought to receive another twenty-five hundred annually, just to compensate for the additional duties that they have as the vice presiding judge. Um, this has been, um, uh, an interesting process to go through the selection of a new judge and to try to work this system out, to be fair, and, uh, we, I've, I've been, we're very fortunate to have staff like Cindy and Stacy that, because I worked with them from the very beginning, and, and their input has been invaluable in terms of trying to make a fair process. And I, I, it's been kind of quiet, because it's kind of a personnel thing. I've not made a lot of big deal out of it, but I have, on occasion, asked for, if anyone has input, to certainly contact me. The other two members of the committee are David and, and Ed, and so, if you have any, want to have any input, you want to talk to us, I'm, I'm open to conversation, suggestions. This is just kind of boiled out through all the meetings with, that I've had with, with Cindy and, and Stacy, and Ed and David.
All right. Thanks, Pete.
Okay.
Um, items from council. Pete, you have anything else?
Um, yeah, since, since this does have a, especially since it has a pay, a salary piece, it, we need to vote on, it has to have.
Yes, we do. I, I neglected to do.
I moved the resolution.
Cast your votes on ten A. Passed unanimously. Now, Pete, do you have any items from council?
I, I've, I'm, I'm tapped out.
All right. Larry, you want to go next?
I'd just like to congratulate Bob Helsel, president of the Briarwood Neighborhood Association. Uh, he had a great neighborhood meeting last night. Uh, there were a number of Hispanic families who were moving into the community, and his emphasis was to encourage all the Hispanic families that had moved in to come and bring some of their native dishes to the meeting for a cover-dish supper. And he had a very good turnout, and the camaraderie between the Hispanic and the Caucasian, for one of the better ones, and, and the African-American there was really great. Uh, the diversity was good, but the unity that was, came out of it for a common goal was even more, uh, noticeable, and, uh, so my hat's off to Bob, and I'd like to encourage other neighborhoods to do the same thing, to reach out to new neighbors irrespective of their ethnic background as they move into the neighborhood, to include them in. as they move into the neighborhood, to include them in, to get their input and get their ideas and get their efforts. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Larry, thanks. Ed? Gary? All right. Skip?
There was a meeting at the, involving the overlay for the OU Medical Campus. And I attended a meeting that was very engaging as it relates to the history of Oklahoma City and as it related to the urban renewal, the transformation of a particular geographical area, northeast Oklahoma City. And one of the things that was very perplexing is that the memories of urban renewal and in the '60s, what happened as it related to the change of a particular geographical area in reference to housing, as it related to economic development. And we're going forward with a, well, a plan will soon come before the council. It's been before the Planning Commission. It has been partially talked and discussed, and it has been deferred. I would seriously ask that each one of us, before this matter really comes to the council, that in an effort to have a clear conscience as it relates to the decision that any of us will make, that we drive the area and actually see the geographical boundaries that is being discussed and the conditions of the area. So when the matter comes before us, without some clear knowledge of what happened, you know, 40, 50 years ago, that we will have some understanding of what the geographical boundaries and the economic, the residential impact that this decision that we will have to make will have. And I just think that, you know, it would be, it would be great for every one of us to know that whatever decision we make, we have actually seen and know the terrain that it's, and the people that it's going to affect, both from the medical foundation, the campus, and also as it relates to the residential area. So, and I want to thank Terry White, Herschel Lamorin, and all the staff that made the accommodations possible for the meeting and how well-organized the meeting was, and, but it just, it heartens me to hear some of the memories of people that were there to speak about some of the issues that they wanted to address. And I think some of those issues are still painful, but I think when we look at the area, that it will give us, I think, a clear conscience in reference to what decision and the right decision to be made. So I just want to know, let everybody know that, you know, from my perspective, the meeting was great. I think the representatives on both sides did a great job in reference to presenting information to the citizens. This was the second public meeting, along with a public hearing that was before the Planning Commission, so to Mr. Box and his staff, and to the foundation and their staff. And even though the city is the applicant, we really didn't have any dialogue in reference to the presentation of the information, but I think it was a well-organized, well-planned presentation in reference to getting citizens involved and giving them information as it relates to the process and the plan overall. So, thank you.
Are there more meetings, are there more meetings planned?
It was my understanding that Mr. Box and some of the residents had agreed to downsize some of the numbers, to meet in a smaller group with Mr. Box, and he'd agreed to meet with them on a more individual basis. So I don't have any knowledge of any public meetings, other than at some point in time, I'm sure it will come back before the Planning Commission.
Will it come to this body?
Well, yes, ultimately, it will come to us. Yes, yes.
Skip, just to clarify, you're talking about between Fourth Street and Eighth Street and Lottie and Lincoln, that rectangular?
Yes, yes, yes. It's the PUD that has been applied for, actually, the city of Oklahoma City is listed as the applicant, but it is involving, basically, the expansion of the medical campus.
Was there any discussion about the Northeast Rail Line, or how close that Northeast Rail Line comes to that rectangle?
That was not mentioned at the meeting, Councilman Shadid, and I think primarily because those individuals who were there, it was basically to give a clear understanding as it related to the expansion itself, and not, you know, at that point in time, there was no discussion as it relates to what other economic impact that the rail would have as it relates to what several of us had discussed in reference to coming through the Health Science Center and making that beer up towards the northeast line.
I think that's just an interesting component of that rectangle, of that area, because it could be that at some point in the future, the Northeast Rail Line runs parallel to First Street, and then if you went through Washington Park, the Urban Renewal Authority has all the land you need within that rectangle to potentially bring a spur right to the center of the Health Science Center, and that would have tremendous economic development impacts to that, to that area and the surrounding communities.
I agree with you.
All right, Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity last night to attend an incredible event at the Cowboy, National Cowboy Museum. It was the Champions of Health banquet, recognizing a number of amazing organizations across the state that are working on improving health statistics for all of our citizens. I really just wanted to thank Ted Hayes, he's the president of Blue Cross and Blue Shield, lives in Tulsa at the moment, but Magic Johnson was the speaker, and he was absolutely outstanding, not only as a speaker, but he, without telling anybody, auctioned some Thunder tickets in Los Angeles against the Lakers and a dinner with himself. He raised $30,000 for this Oklahoma Caring Foundation in about two minutes. The bidding went crazy, and he finally said, "Let's stop, and I'll just sell two of them." So two people both stepped up very strongly, and immediately, he said, "This is such a wonderful organization." The Magic Johnson Foundation donated another $25,000 to the Oklahoma Caring Foundation. It was a really exciting evening. Both Terry Klein, our State Department of Health and Secretary, was there, Terry White, Department of Mental Health, and it was just a very special evening. So I want to congratulate Blue Cross and Blue Shield for bringing all these organizations together.
All right, it sounded like a good event.
It was fun.
David?
No thanks.
All right. Very little from the city manager reports today? Any citizens to be heard? Anyone signed up?
No, sir.
All right, looks like we're ready to get out of here. We're adjourned.